No, I think they probably oversold that, but I think the opponents also, I think, were... I think they were kind of misleading in some of their numbers. I mean, because I looked at it. It may take... I think most owners would have plenty of space to do that, even with the forest. I mean, the whole thing has been, you know, like, even them talking about it, like, it's going to increase or decrease for it. Like, that's not...
Well, you can't control.
That's not gonna happen.
Like, those old libraries, there's so few houses that are affected by this. It'd be interesting to ask them if they've dealt with it. Yeah, we're good.
Yeah. No. I was surprised that it was unanimous, but maybe I shouldn't have been...
I was surprised that it was unanimous. I mean, the planning commission recommended denial.
Right.
Of course, that's, you know, we're advisory, but as you know, I've represented many applicants before the city council, some of them coming on the heels of a recommendation for denial.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, how you doing?
How's it going?
Hey!
How you doing?
All right, how are you?
Hey!
So I think it's kind of rare to see that.
Yeah, that it was like...
That big a turnaround.
Yeah.
You're a poll worker.
Hey!
All right.
Well, you know what? People having trouble getting here.
American time, because I came in from the west.
I don't know. I come in Rockspur, you know, Magnum Street up that way, and I usually get here about five o'clock. I don't know. Somebody said it was sun.
I feel like it's Mary's for though.
Look, because if you try to get on, not, not, and then...
It came to us.
So I had to keep on around the bend.
I had to someone had to be nice.
That was even worse.
Really surprising.
I don't know what it is. Somebody had, like, somebody that early.
Uh-oh, I knew this was bound to happen. That this was coming.
What's that?
That's next one.
You got eight.
Right. Yes.
That's for you.
Right.
Thank you.
Don't...
Have you seen the new plan?
Heard it was...
They're down to forty-four units.
There being too many people.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm good on the news.
You know, I tried to tell them, I said, the unloaded gun.
Bring him over.
Because when that little bang flag comes out...
My damn fault was beer and bread.
Well, you could eat bread, just do like me. Just hold it. Or limit as possible, or give up the bread and eat sweet potato. I love baked sweet potato.
Yeah, I love some baked sweet potato.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission.
Yeah, it is. I saw it advertised.
The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the city council and the county board of commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. And you should know that the elected officials have the final say on any of the issues before us this evening. As always, if you wish to speak on an agenda item, please come up and sign up on the sheets to my left. For those of you who wish to speak, please state your name and your address clearly into the microphone. And each side has ten minutes to speak for or against any of the proposals in front of us this evening. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Al Turk.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Gousch.
Present.
Commissioner Bryan.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Busby.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Kinchen.
Here.
Commissioner Hornbuckle.
Present.
Commissioner Van.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Staff notes that Commissioners Satterfield, Hyman, and Gibbs have excused absences.
Great, thank you. We now have the approval of the minutes and the consistency statements from the April tenth, 2018 meeting. Commissioner Bryan?
I move approval of the minutes and consistency statements as presented.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do we need to make a motion for the three excused members as well?
I so move.
We have moved and seconded the excused absence request for Commissioner Hyman, Vice Chair Hyman, Commissioner Gibbs, and Commissioner Satterfield. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will move to any adjustments to the agenda. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Grace Smith with the Planning Department. There are no adjustments to the agenda that staff is aware of, and we can affirm that all legal notice requirements have been carried out and executed in compliance with state and local law, and affidavits for such are own file in the Planning Department.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bryan?
If possible, under new business, I have a brief question I'd like to ask.
We can, we can add that? And would you like to move the amended agenda with your new business item?
I so move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have two zoning map change cases in front of us this evening, and we will lead off with the thirty-seven, thirty-six Garrett Road case that is case Z one seven triple zero four four, and we'll start with the staff report.
And zoning case one seven zero zero four four. And the zoning, associate zoning case Z one seven zero zero four four.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I am Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. I will be presenting case number Z one seven zero 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 forty-four. This is thirty-seven, thirty-six Garrett Road. The applicant is Dan Jewell from Colter Jewel Thames. The property is currently within the county jurisdiction portions of it, and is, there is a pending annexation case associated with it. The site is six point zero four seven acres. The current zoning is residential suburban twenty, and the applicant is seeking a change to planned development residential with a density of three point nine six nine. The proposal is single-family development up to twenty-four homes. This is the aerial map, and it shows the properties highlighted in the red hatched area. There are two properties associated with this. Thirty-seven, thirty-six Garrett Road, which is located with the street frontage, and there's a single-family house, and then the property behind it is thirty-seven, thirty-eight Garrett Road, which is essentially a landlocked piece of property, and there appears to be a small barn on it in addition to it being heavily wooded. The properties are located on the west side of Garrett Road, just north of the intersection with Cottonwood Drive and south of Pickett Road. This is the existing conditions map that is provided in the development plan. As mentioned, the larger property, which is about four acres in size, has a single-family home on it, and the second track is heavily wooded with the barn. In the staff report, there are a number of photos that have been taken to give the planning commission an idea of the area and the conditions surrounding it. Just to highlight a few of the photos, starting from the top left and working right, the first picture is the subject property. That shows the existing house. Then you've got several houses of worship located on Garrett Road, and then there are some examples of the single-family residential neighborhoods, multifamily residential neighborhoods, all within close proximity to the site. This is the future land use map. The area is shown as a yellow shade. It's a low-density residential, which is up to four dwelling units per acre, and that is consistent with what the applicant is requesting. Here is the context map, which shows the existing zoning as RS twenty, and the applicant is proposing a PDR with a density of three point nine six nine. Staff has reviewed this request and determined that it is consistent with the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. In terms of the request specifically, again, the density, three point nine six nine, up to twenty-four, single-family dwelling units. The development plan shows a minimum street yard of fifteen feet, a committed tree coverage of twenty percent, an open space protection of sixteen percent, and maximum building height of thirty-five feet. This is the development plan, which depicts all of these items in addition to the two access points and some of the transportation-related commitments. In terms of the commitments, I mentioned the number of units, and there are two traffic-related commitments, one dealing with the installation of additional asphalt for a bicycle lane and an additional turn lane on Garrett Road for the site access. Staff has found this request to be consistent with the low-density residential flom, as well as consistent with two point three one B contiguous development, two three two A infrastructure capacity, eight one four D development review and adopted regional bicycle plans, and eleven point, eleven point one B, which is the adequate school facilities. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the development plan, with the comprehensive plan, and all applicable policies and ordinances, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. We will open the public hearing, and we have one individual signed up to speak, and it's Mr. Dan Jewell in favor of the proposal.
Thank you, Jamie. Good evening, Chairperson Bryan and fellow commissioners. I am Dan Jewell with Colter Jewel Thames. We are working with my clients, Rice and Powell, Walker Harris, who are Durham-based developers. In fact, Walker is a Durham native, has worked here all of his life. We're before you, making what we think is a modest request for rezoning this property to allow for a single-family residential community. We're committing to single-family, four units to the acre, and a maximum of twenty-four units. As Jamie said, the proposal is in keeping with the comprehensive plan, so does not require a future land use map amendment. Because of that, a neighborhood meeting was not required, but we chose to have several. We reached out to the Garrett Farms folks last fall. Their homeowners association organized the first neighborhood meeting. We had maybe twenty people there. It was pretty well-attended. We listened to the neighbors' questions and comments and concerns about buffering, setbacks, uses, access to their neighborhood, and stormwater management. We went back in front of them about a month ago and had a second meeting, where we had almost as many people showed up, and what they told us was they appreciated that we had listened to them and taken care of their concerns. Some of you may know, there's actually a one hundred and one unit subdivision, which did not need a rezoning, has a site plan approval, and is in the final stages of getting construction drawings approved directly to the north of this parcel, in the north of Garrett Farms. So it will sort of complete the intersection, the corner of Garrett Road and Pickett Road to the north. It, when it's all built out, this parcel before you today, the parcels before you today, will sort of be a donut hole now, surrounded by single-family residential, including Garrett Farms, which we all know was developed years ago. There are some townhouses and apartments farther south, and then we have the two big churches, Crescent Academy and Church of the Good Shepherd, right across the street. That new neighborhood to the north has been designed with access to Pickett Road and Garrett Road, but most importantly, they have a stub required by the UDO for connectivity going into this parcel, sort of in northeast quadrant, and we've shown that as a text commitment on this, this plan. We've been coordinating with their designer to have the streets meet up in the same point, make sure the water and sewer are coordinated, and also the stormwater management. They will have a little bit of water flowing onto our property. We will accommodate that in our required stormwater management pond. I want to be clear, our proposed neighborhood does not have any vehicle connections to Garrett Farms. It only connects to Garrett Road on the east side, and the new neighborhood that's under, will soon be under construction on the north side, and our driveway will align with the driveway, which, the Church of the Good Shepherd, which is across the street. So in the spirit of brevity, that concludes my comments. We hope you'll agree with the staff that our proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, other policies and ordinances, and can find to make a positive recommendation to council, and thank you for your time, and we're all happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Would anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Miller?
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Dan, I was looking at your, in your development plan, in the existing conditions, and you've got your tree save along the southern and western boundaries, and it looks like there might be some at the top, too. I just don't, if, if, if I'm understanding the drawing that you have here, it doesn't look like there are very many trees in the tree save area.
Believe it or not, on the, the western side tree save area, there are a lot of trees and a lot of bamboo. We've actually been working with the Ms. McCandless next door, and she wants to see if we can work together to clean up some of the bamboo so that the trees will grow back. Evidently, that was, that was a pasture a long time ago, but the tree save area is actually labeled tree coverage area so that we know we will need to replant rather robustly to meet the ordinance requirements for, for tree coverage.
All right, thank you, because for the most part, the large part of the property is clear.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that you plan to demolish the existing house?
Yes, the existing house will go away. We are actively looking for somebody who might want the house, so if you have anybody in mind, send them to us.
Is that, is that a Pickett family house?
It's a Garrett family.
Garrett family house?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Bryan?
Thank you. Have a few comments concerning the staff report. On page four, section D, I think the second sentence needs to be revised because it speaks of industrial land use designation, and this isn't industrial.
Good catch. Thank you.
And also, I think it's attachment six rather than attachment five that provides the comprehensive plan policies.
Thank you.
And the other point on the reasonable and in public interest, I don't disagree with what you're stating, but since the current zoning also is in align with the future land use map, it seems like a very weak reason to put, or this being reasonable.
I'm having trouble hearing you. I'm sorry.
I don't disagree with your conclusion about reasonable and in the public interest, but since the current zoning is also consistent with the future land use map, this seems like a pretty weak reason. You know, and I also didn't find it listed among the various reasons listed in section one dot two dot two.
Because it's in one dot two dot one.
Oh, excuse me. And, but, you know, that's just my opinion. I do have a question for the applicant.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bryan.
I don't know if it's possible for you to do this, but there were some lovely big trees around that house. I'm not asking for any commitments or anything. I'm just expressing my hope that maybe you could save one or two of them.
We will, we will do the best we can. We will do the best we can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Mr. Jewell, I'm just curious for your client. Do we, do you have a sense of the price points for these proposed single-family homes?
I, I, I don't know that we do yet at this point. They'll, I'm sure they'll be consistent with houses of a similar size and, and Garrett Farms, maybe, maybe a little more because there'll be, be newer houses.
Do you have a sense of what those, of those prices are?
I, I do not. I do not. Maybe somebody has looked at a house in Garrett Farms recently and can answer that question.
Commissioner Al Turk?
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions for staff. One is in, just a minor clarification. In attachment eight, the, just in the assumptions, traffic, traffic and impact and stuff, you say that this is based on ten single-family lots, the current designation. Should that be more than that if it's RS twenty, six, on six acres, or is that...
It would be, it would be somewhere in the range of eleven or twelve units.
Okay, so that's, I was, just wasn't sure if math right. My second question is for Bill. So we've now gotten, we get commitments from developers now that, to add four feet of asphalt for a future bike lane. This came up last, I think in the last meeting in Rollingwood. They hadn't done that initially, and they said they talked to you, and you suggested a four-foot widening. Now, my understanding from the more recent comprehensive plan, comprehensive bike plan, the recommendation is now five feet. Is that the case, or, because I, I think Dale, your colleague in transportation, has given me that advice, so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yes, Bill Judge Transportation, the, yeah, the new standard for actually marked bike lane is a, is a five-foot bike lane, but that would be, NC DOT requires a minimum of sixteen feet total, so it could either be a twelve-foot travel lane and a five-foot, a twelve-foot travel lane and a four-foot bike lane, or an eleven and a five. We generally just ask for the four feet initially because it's mostly just functioning as a paved shoulder, but our intent would be ultimately that once, yeah, we get the bike lane further to the north and to the south, where we could stripe it as a bike lane, we'd probably come back and reduce the travel lane to eleven foot and ride a five-foot bike lane.
So I guess why not just recommend five feet now, right?
Well, typically DOT, with the turn lane, they require a twelve-foot travel lane, so we just need sixteen foot total, so if the twelve and four provides the sixteen feet, and then it could later be restriped to eleven and five.
I see. Okay, so that's not, okay, all right. I guess it doesn't make sense to me because then it just seems like more work later on, but maybe, maybe I don't quite understand the...
Well, because in the interim, we're only getting for the frontage of the site, and until we have enough asphalt to the north and south and on both sides of the road to actually mark it as a bike lane.
I see.
We can't, we can't mark it as a bike lane.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, sorry, just to real clarify on your first question about the number of lots, we, we use a twenty percent reduction to account for the proposed road infrastructure when we're figuring that out, so that's why it came down from probably twelve to ten when we, when we did that.
Okay, great. That's helpful. Thanks. Can I, I want to, since I am the BPAC liaison, I do want to highlight some of their, their comments, and so this is a question for Dan. I mean, the BPAC did recommend that you, we've done this before, where we recommend an off-site sidewalk construction, and I guess you were pretty concise in your response, saying you're not able to commit to that, but I would like you to maybe address that. I mean, I know it's costly, but we do often ask for developers to go above and beyond in some ways, and I think, given that this is relatively close to fifteen five oh one, it's within walking distance of some businesses down there, you know, it may be nice to have this extension of a hundred and fifty feet.
Understand, understand, and, and, and yes, I think, given that the big project in the north, a hundred units, is eventually going to have a lot of people who may want to go down that way, and, and we're going to have twenty-four, it's, it's probably a necessary, or not a necessary, it's probably a warranted connection, a needed connection. You know, again, as I've, as I've said on, on other projects of modest scale, you know, if this was a much larger project, it would make sense economically, but, you know, this is, my clients over the years have probably put a hundred thousand dollars into the payment and lieu structure for sidewalks where they've been in a position where it wasn't practical to build a sidewalk, or NC DOT said, we don't want a sidewalk out there, and, and this is exactly what that fund is, is meant to do. It's to fill these gaps that we see all over Durham. So, so we're, we'd still respectively say that the, that this project shouldn't bear the, the burden or the cost of that sidewalk, but the city has funds available from many other clients of mine who have put money into the pool over the years.
Would you be, would you, would you be willing to add to that, to provide funding to that fund?
Hmm...
For this project?
Any idea what kind of money we might be talking about?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Make a recommendation to council. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually answer the question for Commissioner Johnson about that price point. Houses in that area, three-bedroom, about thirty-one hundred square feet, or about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's on the low end. So with today's building cost, you're looking at about five hundred thousand plus, but that's four bedrooms, two and a half baths.
Thank you for confirming.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I just had a quick question for staff. I don't remember in the past having green and red printing on the bike pad report, and I was not certain what the significance of the green was. However, cheerful.
There is. We try to make it aesthetically pleasing for you.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, but I still don't know who's speaking in the green.
The green, the green is, is Dale McKeel's comments, and then the applicant's response is in red.
So the bike pad request is in the black, Dale McKeel is green, and the applicant is red.
Let me just double-check.
Yep.
No, I'm sorry. The, the black text is Dale's, and then the applicant's is, I believe, in both red, in both green and in red.
Yeah, sorry. I think I can clarify. Sorry. Bill Judge Transportation, the, I believe the black text was BPAC's initial comment.
Okay.
Green text was a second review comment, and the red text is the applicant's response.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Now, I don't feel so, quite so silly asking the question.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Seeing none at this point, I think we're ready to entertain a motion, if someone's ready to move that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send case one seven zero 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 four four forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Great. Properly motioned, case Z one seven zero 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 four four, moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hornbuckle. All those in favor, please raise your right Any opposed?
Motion carries eleven to zero.
Thank you very much. Our second and final zoning case this evening is case number Z one eight, quadruple zero one. This is five one two three Chin Page Road. We'll start with the staff report.
Good evening, Jacob Wiggins with the Planning Department. The item before you is a zoning map change request for a property located at five one two three Chin Page Road. The subject site is in the city's jurisdiction. This is a request submitted by Charlie Oakley with McAdams. This is a request to change the zoning designation of one parcel. It's approximately one acre in size from residential rural to industrial light. There's no development plan associated with this, so the request, if approved, will permit any uses in the IL zoning district. I'm an aerial map of the subject site. You can see the case highlighted in red. I mean, you see the Cree development a little further to the west of the site, and just across the street is a flex sand warehouse space, the, some air... The, some area photos, these are also in your staff report. The top three pictures kind of give a vantage point of the site, or looking around the site from Chin Page Road. Lovely view of the forested site in the lower left-hand corner, and as well as the existing development near the site on Chin Page Road, seen as image number five. Looking at this area from the zoning context point of view, as you can see, the property surrounding this site on all sides is already, is zoned industrial light. The, the stretch of Chin Page Road is a mix of vacant properties with some industrial Flex Warehouse spaces. You can see in the southeastern corner of this image, there's some residential that has been platted, but not built out yet. Looking at the future land use map, again, pretty similar to the zoning map in this area. The subject site is zoned, or I'm sorry, is flomed industrial currently, as well as the surrounding properties. If you go a little further north or south from this site, then you run into more residential development. Some IL zoning district standards, as I noted, this request does not involve a development plan. So the, any development would adhere to the current ordinance standards. These are some of the dimensional standards in the UDO for IL-zoned properties. So comprehensive plan policies for this request. Staff reviewed three key comprehensive plan policies, the future land use map, as well as contiguous development and infrastructure capacity. We found that the request is consistent with those three items, and overall that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission may have at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will open the public hearing for this case, and we have one individual signed up, Mr. Charlie Oakley.
It's me. Evening, my name is Charlie Oakley, 2905 Meridian Parkway in Durham. I'm with the McAdams Company. We're, we're representing our client for this request to rezone 5123 Chin Page Road from RR to IL industrial light. The requested IL zoning matches the zoning of the, all of the adjoining properties. It's sort of a pocket of residential in a industrial area, industrially zoned area. And it matches the future land use map, land use for this property. There's currently no anticipated use of the property, which is why you don't see a development plan. And the request is simply to have the zoning match. The land, the owner of this lot owns a larger parcel adjacent to this, just to have their two parcels match zoning. I stated in the staff report and by staff here tonight, this request is consistent with the UDO, future land use plan and comprehensive plan, and the other policies of Durham. And we ask for your support of their finding, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Would anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move to the commissioners. Any commissioners who have questions or comments? Commissioner Bryan, Harris, and Miller. Commissioner Bryan?
Question for staff. Under utility impacts, this is in attachment six, you talk about the fact that the zoning designation would increase the consumption of water, but the numbers, the way you've given the numbers doesn't show that. I think maybe the numbers have been reversed.
Great, Commissioner Bryan, you are correct. Yeah, the, the total is correct. But yeah, the demand is floodlot there. Thank you for bringing that out, sir.
And am I correct that there's a stream that goes across this property?
This particular par?
Yes.
Double check my madness, I'm not aware of the stream crossing this particular property.
Okay, well, it's, it's a, it's not a matter of big importance.
Attachment one in your, the context map shows the streams, and you'll see that there's not a blue line stream shown on this property.
Okay. And a question for the applicant, I was just curious. Once this has been rezoned, is there any possibility that it's going to be combined with another piece of industrial land in the area?
There's a, the 31-acre parcel directly adjacent to this that is owned by the same entity. So they could recombine it anytime. But I don't know, I don't think that's like an immediate plan to do.
Okay, I would just, it would make sense to me, that's why I asked.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Harris?
I just have one comment for staff. Thank you for attachment seven. The use permits in the industrial light zone, this is very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Mr. Bryan asked my question.
This is good. If you saw next month's agenda, you'll know that it's good to be briefed tonight and bank your time tonight because we'll be here a while next month. Any other questions or comments by commissioners?
A second.
Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send case Z180001 forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed?
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you, thank you very much. Before we adjourn, we did have one new item for new business. Commissioner Bryan?
It was just a question for staff. Starting shortly after last month's meeting, I've begun to get all sorts of emails from the city of Durham's Human Resources Department, especially about the open enrollment and stuff like that. And that confuses me because I don't see any reason they should be sending me anything.
That confuses me as well, Mr. Bryan. We'll look into that. Your email address is part of the alias email address for the entire Planning Commission, and I wonder if there's just been a little hiccup somewhere with the email grouping, so we'll check on that for you. And I did have one other thing I failed to mention. Mr. Judge would like to introduce a new staff member, if you don't mind, if you have just a minute.
Sure.
This is a good meeting to have a minute. Mr. Judge?
Yes, I just wanted to introduce Ms. Erlene Thomas. She's started with us about six months ago doing development review. She's a professional engineer and has over 20 years' experience. So some of you, I think, may have already interacted with her with answering a question or two, but she's going to be taking on more of my role here as I do other things within the department.
Welcome aboard, and please, you're welcome to make a remark if you'd like.
Thank you, and I look forward to working with you all in this new capacity.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments for the good of the order? Seeing none, I can't believe I'm saying this, at 6:06, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Can I put my, my request for?